Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
We'll now move on to item L3.
Yes, President Dice, members of the board, the purpose of L3 is to present to the board for first review, the proposed main construction contract for the ECL project with Turner Construction. The board is aware that district staff recommends contracting with Turner Construction as the lease leaseback general contractor for the entire project. Here this evening is district's counsel that, who I guess I could say was one of the architects or the main architect in crafting this contract. And Mr. Baker, I understand he, because he's familiar with the contract, may also speak to this issue, but I think Mr. Traver will take the lead in introducing this item to the board.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back. It's been awhile since we last spoke.
Microphone.
Is it okay if I move this? Okay, great. Awesome, thank you. So we have a couple of items to talk about tonight, and the first one is going to be the agreement with Turner. This is another lease leaseback agreement. It is similar but larger than the agreement that you saw last time around for the demolition and abatement. The reason that it's larger is because this is more, this is all vertical construction type stuff, so you're going to need more procedures in place to protect you. My thinking on how to do this was for me to give you a brief overview of what's going on in this document. A lot of it is based on the same thing that we did in the abatement contract. Basically, what Roy told me months ago was, do what we did with the abatement contract, but make it work, you know, for what we're doing now. So essentially, we have a contingency built in. It's two and a half percent, same as we did on the abatement contract. Basically, the way that this works is Turner, through the contract, it's in Article 3, says, "We've looked at everything," and they have. You guys have gotten Turner involved from the beginning, and by doing that, they know there's no surprises. They know sort of what the project is now, and they're developing their GMP based on knowing what that project actually needs to have done in order to get us through completion. If they encounter, if they encounter negligence that is on things that they have missed, either in the way, the means and methods in which they've performed the work, or if they just missed something in their review of the drawings, they're going to be able to draw upon that contingency. This is a little bit different than the way a contingency usually works, but the way that we set this up, and this was Roy's thinking, and I think it's actually an extra layer of protection over above what you usually see. We have the ability to approve all of the contingency draws. So let's say, for example, they say, "You know what? We just missed something. We missed a $10,000 item when we were reviewing the drawings." They would present to us a request for a contingency draw. We would look at it. We would say, "Was this gross negligence or willful misconduct? If it wasn't, we approve the contingency draw." So basically, whenever you have a construction contract, there's always a little bit of margin of error number built into that contract, because everyone knows you can't possibly foresee everything that's coming down the pipeline. So that's what this contingency is. Instead of the margin of error being included within the contractor's number, the margin of error is represented within the contingency in this case, so. A couple of other things that are, you know, that's kind of unique about this agreement. Couple of other things that I think are-
And if they don't use up all the contingency, then it-
It comes back to us.
Yeah.
A lot of times with a lease leaseback project, you're going to have dollars left over in the contingency, but in those cases, the contingency is really only used for unforeseeable things, unforeseen things. In this case, we don't specifically call that out. Basically, if there is, if there is unforeseen and unforeseeable stuff, for example, a site condition, they go out there and they determine that there's something on the site that they couldn't have known reasonably at the time they developed this GMP and at the time we signed off on it, then they would come to us and ask for an adjustment in the GMP itself. And the only way they get to do that is if it's not reasonably foreseeable, if it's not reasonably inferrible from the contract documents that they have developed their GMP based upon. Couple of other things-
I thought you just said that it had, that it was sort of a easier standard for them in that it, as long as it wasn't gross or willful misconduct, that they could spend the contingency. Reasonably foreseeable or, you know, not reasonably foreseeable, sort of a more generous standard to us, a little harder standard for them to me.
I would, I would say this contract is generous to the district in that regard.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The way that this is drafted-
Okay, so the standard is not just grossful, grosser, willful misconduct, as long as there's no gross or willful misconduct. So it could have been foreseeable, but it wasn't willful, or, you know, it might have been a negligent kind of oversight.
If it's just straight negligence, they get to access that contingency, and when the contingency is gone, it's gone. And that starts to eat away at their, you know, profit that they've taken away from the project. If it's something that's not reasonably inferrible from the documents, if it's, you know, this is where basically you've just got something that's missing from the documents. Two buildings don't fit together right, then they're going to come back and say, "Hey, this is not something that we should be on the hook for," but, you know, it's all a matter of, is it reasonably inferrible from the contract documents, from the CDs that you're now approving, so.
Yeah, and if, if at the end of the day that the buildings don't fit together, but they've used up their contingency, they got to make it fit together?
Yeah, it's their responsibility to do that.
Okay.
For the GMP.
Okay, proceed.
Couple of other things. The way that this is set up, the project is not technically complete until you all say it is complete, until it's completed to your satisfaction. So while you need to make tenant improvements going along, you're at the same time going to be holding back 5% of your retention. So when the time comes, they're going to submit to you a request for final payment, and they're going to say the work is complete. And at that time, essentially, your architect is going to say, "We think it's complete," or "We don't think it's complete," and they need to go back and do X, Y, and Z. But essentially, the project isn't complete until you guys say that it is. Obviously, we can't act unreasonably in denying them that and have them out there doing extra work without pay, but that's another extra layer of protection that's here in this agreement. Again, I think this agreement is good. It's gone through, it's gone through Roy Miller and Dave Gallagher and myself. It's gone through the city. There's been a lot of eyes on it that have, I think, helped it get to a place where I feel comfortable recommending it. I think that if you have specific questions or comments, I want to make sure that I leave enough time to get to those. I know that you all are familiar with the concepts that we have here, having done this once before, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you guys for your specific questions.
Thanks, Jim. That's helpful. I think that's true. This, this looks so familiar in so many ways and different iterations. Board members, are there any specific questions or things you want him to maybe cover?
I just have some small, some small ones. So Jim, if we could go to Article 4, 4.5.3, quiet enjoyment. Nine of two, yeah. You there?
Yes.
Okay, so the last sentence says, "Lease or shall have the right to inspect the project and the site as provided in Section 7.1." Should that be "Lee C." or is that, is that right? Is that correct in saying the "Lee Sore"? Because the "Lee Sore" is Turner, and I would assume that they are the ones who are doing, you know, all the inspections and building while they're there. So is that, is that correct language? I thought it may should be the "Lee C." which is the district should have the right to inspect the project and site as provided in Section 7.1, but maybe I'm not correct. Let me go to 7.1.
It does read a little bit backward. I think that section has to be read in conjunction with 7.1.
Right, that's, yeah.
So 7.1 also reads a little bit backwards. The reason that-
Right.
The reason that it's worded that way is because of the site, the interplay between the site lease and the facilities lease. And the thinking is, even though, so basically, we lease them the site and they're immediately leasing it back to us under the facilities lease.
Right.
So what they're saying here is-
They're the lease-
They have the ability, under 7.1, they have the ability to go in, do their work, inspect, and make sure, basically, that we're not doing anything to interfere with their ability to complete the project.
Okay.
That's, that's why it seems a little bit backward, but-
Right.
What they want to, what we're doing is saying, and what they're doing is protecting themselves by saying, "We understand we're leasing it back to you, school district, but you're going to let us go out and do our work without interfering with them."
Okay, so when they lease it back to us, we are the "Lee C." correct?
Under this, yeah. Under this document, yeah. They are the "Lee Sore," we are the "Lee C."
Okay, but it still is, it's because of the mechanism of the lease. That's just how it reads. Okay. So let's stay with 7.1, because I got another, and this is just one wordsmithing. In the second sentence, it says, "Following the acceptance of the project by district." Are they meaning the completion? Are they implying the completion of the project? When it says "the acceptance," that's the key word I'm zeroing in on, acceptance versus completion.
No, I think that what they're, what that section is driving at is during, during the course of construction and before we've closed it out.
Okay.
So what this is saying is, they can come, they can come into the project at reasonable times in arrangement with us for purposes of making repairs, so that's if we have punch list items, things like that.
Right, got you.
And to inspect whether we are essentially keeping the project in a manner so that they can complete their work.
Okay. All right, okay.
I actually had a question. I know that when Dave Gallagher, even in the presentation, maybe last week, I'm just losing time here, but the whole point about having the high school ready July 2015, what, what is that from this agreement? If in order for our students and staff to actually move into that facility and use it, how has this changed to accommodate that ability? I mean, will we be, you know, is there some acceleration for a particular building in that instance as it relates to the agreement?
Yeah, so there is a document, I believe it's Exhibit D, it's way in the back, that is going to contain both your guaranteed maximum price spreadsheet, and it's going to contain your major milestone schedule. And so part of those milestones are going to be completion of your high school by whatever date is agreed upon by the parties. I would add that the way that the agreement is set up, you have a liquidated damages provision so that you are entitled to timely completion of the project, which means, you know, like we said before, it's complete when you guys are okay with it. You're entitled to that within the timeframe that is set forth in those milestones, so if, and if they are late with that, your liquidated damages amount is $5,000 per day per phase. So my understanding is there's going to be at least two phases, possibly three, and the first phase is obviously going to be the high school, right? So that's your protection against delayed completion.
That's helpful, just to understand how it's staged, that's helpful. Section D, I got, thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Traver?
So a couple. The worst-case scenario, Turner Construction goes out of business or defaults, because whatever, other projects took a tumble, stock goes down, where like, you know, they're halfway building a project and then they're done. So what, what are our remedies? And, you know, especially if they go bankrupt, how, do we have the ability to sort of, you know, have someone else build it, but at that guaranteed maximum price with somehow, are we, what, trying to force a bankrupt company to pay us the additional cost of building at the, at a higher rate down the road?
No, so it happens actually quite often, but I don't think that'll happen with Turner. But your question is more, you know, legal and-
Yeah. Of course, I got to think, you know-
What's the worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario, that's, that's what we do, right?
Sure.
As lawyers.
You would make a claim against your performance bond in that case. So your, your performance bond is there, and basically what happens is the surety issues what's known as a performance bond and the amount of the GMP. And if there is a dispute, if the contractor walks away, which actually happens a lot on small projects, especially when the economy went sideways, folks went out of business. And when that happens, you make a claim against the performance bond, in which case, the surety is required to get you the rest of the way there. So you'd find another, you'd find another contractor and complete the work with them.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer. That's what all that stuff about surety bonds-
Isn't it in the contract as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I read, okay.
Yeah. Do we, as the, I don't know, whether it's "Lee C." or owner or what the proper term is here, but do we have any right of refusal on the subcontractors?
Yeah, so, I need one second to find that.
I think actually, that's the beauty of having a lease leaseback, from my understanding, that we have the ability to do that and have Turner go back and look at their sub list to find, you know, other subcontractors if the ones that they choose are not to the liking of the district.
It is definitely one of the benefits of doing this this way. So essentially, your answer is in 6.05. If they have, if you have a sub that's unsatisfactory, the district has the right to have that sub terminated. You will know under the subcontract, when Turner bids the project, you'll get a list of the subs, you will know who's on the list. I don't, off the top of my head, without rereading this, I don't know that there's a way for us to deny the use of a sub if they haven't done anything wrong, if they have breached or, you know, caused damage, or we don't want them on the project, we have the ability to terminate them under this 6.05, so.
So that would be once work is commenced, if we have some, some, but what page is that on?
It's on page 62.
Okay. But yeah, if we have, if we think someone's too expensive or had a bad experience with them in the past or got bad recommendations for them upfront, we, we don't have the ability to, I don't, you know, I don't know if this is an issue, but at least someone has told me that that is common in this kind of, maybe it's not a lease leaseback-
Right.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a more traditional-
It's a design build. I think you're talking more about a design build, lease, and not a lease leaseback.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think that's true, but I think it all, it happens in both places. If there is a problem with a sub that caused them to be in default, they're, the subs, this contract says the subs are bound by this contract, same way Turner is, so if they're in default, we have the ability to have them removed. Until then, I don't think that there is a way for us to say, "You can't use that sub" or "You can't use that sub." I think part of the reasoning behind that is Turner is selecting the best subs they can to get the best GMP that they can get us, so. Yeah, and the CBA is basically another protection that we have in a way that we, I don't want to say control, but we have our policies about who is selected as a sub respected through that CBA, so.
And if, if the sub goes out of business or default, is that Turner's problem, or do we go to our surety bond?
That would be Turner's, that would be Turner's problem. They would need to complete the work for the GMP and figure out how they're going to do that, so.
Okay. A general comment on page one of the contract, and on every page thereafter in the footer, the project is referred to as the Emory Center for Community Life, and-
Oh, not Emoryville?
It should be Emoryville Center for Community Life.
Sorry.
For shame, for shame.
Let's make sure we get that right.
Just, I just had a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of districts, I just see the term used quite a bit, District's Construction Project Manager referred to as District Representative, is that, is that our owner's rep?
Yes.
Is that language important? I mean, I'm curious if, because how it's all throughout the document that says District's Construction Project Manager, but our contract with them is as owner's rep. I just don't, you know, is it the same or?
So your district representative under this agreement is anyone authorized by the board to act on behalf of the district under or with respect to the facilities lease.
Okay.
So it's going to be, it's going to be them and anyone else that you authorize to have the ability to act on your behalf under this agreement. My sense is you would want it to just be Swinburne.
Okay, no, that just helped, just clarified. Names mean a lot, so titles are important, so I just wanted to make sure I was consistently thinking who that, who that role belonged to. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay, can you just take a step back? Can you remind me what the, what the benefit of the lease leaseback arrangement is and our viewers at home to the extent that-
Sure, so there's two main ways in which school district projects are built out. One is called design bid build, and that's the traditional bidding model. Under that model, you get your drawings together, everything is ready essentially, and then you put the project out to a bid. You don't have a relationship with those bidders usually before the project goes out to a bid, they haven't seen the drawings before it goes out to a bid. They all submit a bid, and the district is bound to accept the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Throughout the course of that design bid build contract, it is almost inevitable that there will be changes that need to be done, change orders. Basically, the contractor says, "We didn't know about this, we need to recover additional sums." So the sum that they bid the project at is very rarely the sum that you actually end up paying for at the end of the project. You also lose the benefit of having the contractor involved at the inception of the project, which is one of the things that Roy set up in this case, I thought, pretty well, so that Turner has been really involved since the beginning and has the ability to not only see what's going on, but be involved in that process, so that there's not as much surprise about what's in those drawings and what needs to be done in terms of the work. The lease leaseback contract, generally, you get a guaranteed maximum price. It's not uncommon for a district to have unforeseen conditions that increase that guaranteed maximum price, such as site conditions, but it greatly reduces the amount of uncertainty in the sum for which the project will be built.
Okay, and as you explained, the way it works is we lease them, explain it to me, that we, we lease them the site, there's a facility lease and a site lease.
So we lease them the site, they simultaneously lease back to us the facility, the project, which includes the site and what they are building out there, subject to the terms of the facilities lease, which require them to do the work to complete the project.
For guaranteed maximum price, okay. Did, we want to discuss the CBA as part of this or separately?
I think we've already discussed the CBA, and the CBA is inside the contract at this time. I think you have questions regarding the CBA, this is a time to ask them, but I think we approved the CBA some time ago, and so that approval of the CBA is now infused into the, into the contract. Is that correct?
That is true, and I need to say, before we move from this item, Turner was not involved in the development of the CBA, at least so far as I know.
No, they weren't.
So, and the CBA is really more policy-driven, written more as policy than contract. Throughout the course of the CBA, or excuse me, the contract negotiations for this lease, they asked for some changes to the CBA. Those changes are in red line on the back end of what was in the board packet. In large part, those changes, I don't want to say they're non-substantive, but they, a lot of it is changing their reporting requirements from monthly to quarterly. There's also language in there dealing with the manner in which they select the subs and the geographic area, clarifying the geographic area from which they pull the sub pool. Those comments that you see were developed by Dave Gallagher and Turner. I think the city has not, the city council obviously hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in on those yet. The CBA was approved by city schools, so there's a chance that the city might have concerns about those comments, but again, I, my, my sense is that they're not the types of things that should rock the boat, but I wouldn't be doing right by you if I didn't tell you that that was happening and that's where it was. So it's up to you all what you want to do with those comments, so.
When you say comments, I think you mean edits.
Right.
The red line. Yes, yeah, the changes, the proposed changes.
And I believe we kind of looked at the CBA with the, with the demolition contract and made some adjustments with that, and I think the reporting criteria is changing it from monthly to quarterly. I think we had already discussed that when we approved the demolition and made those revisions of the community benefit agreement into that contract, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
That could be, I don't recall specifically doing that.
No, I think, yeah.
So would it, would it be the idea or the thought to actually bring back the revise? I know we have a July meeting for the CBA, which would be out of sync, of course, but I mean, to me, even the, some of the, well, the quarterly reporting, just as an example, makes sense, but I am curious what the, will this go to the city at their presentation in June? Is that what the plan is?
Yes, so when the city considers the joint occupancy agreement on June 3rd, my understanding is that they'll also consider this agreement. They may have a different idea about that, I'm not 100% sure, so.
I know. I mean, John, you, you stated the point, the CBA, the community benefit agreement did come to the full city schools, and the city schools, by the- And the city schools body approved it. My recollection, my recollection at the time was that the city did not have a problem. They thought it was a fine document. But with that being said, that was maybe, I don't know, maybe almost a year ago. So I don't think there will be any substance, substantive, substantive changes. There may be some, you know, slight revisions. But for the most part, when they reviewed it at the city schools, at that first time, they were pretty much satisfied with what the community benefit agreement stated.
I think we're solid on what we got approved at city schools. The only thing that would give me concern is the changes made subsequently. And it may not be a concern, but I just need to let you know that it's there.
Yeah.
No, that's helpful. It explained the red lines, for sure.
Yeah, so there are some, there are some, some red lines in it, in, I don't know, it just seems that when, is, is the city approving this contract? Or are we just approving this contract?
No, it's going to the city on June 3rd, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely going to the city. I think it's going on June 3rd. I, I'm not 100% sure about that.
I mean, technically, the, the contract's with us, right? But, but we'd like to have the city give a thumbs up on it. But legally, are they a party to the contract?
They are not a party to the contract. They do have the benefit of some indemnification provisions that are in here. But the reason that the city needs to approve this contract is that it's specifically called out in the joint occupancy agreement as something they need to approve. I should add that I made this facilities lease and the site lease contingent upon approval of the joint occupancy agreement. Because without the city's buy-in and funding, we would have a shortfall, so.
Yeah, right.
Just to answer the question, yes, the council is scheduled to take up both this contract and the J O A on June 3rd.
Great. Yeah, so I, I mean, I think when we approve this contract, assuming we do, and, and we're, you know, on, online to do so, we should approve the, the CBA as amended. And I think the city should be doing the same.
Yes.
So it's not red lined?
Yes, it'll go clean.
I appreciate the red lines and it, as you say, it, you know, I mean, it, it's mostly changing quarterly or monthly to quarterly and, and, you know, less detail on what kind of outreach efforts, but nonetheless, still good faith outreach efforts to EUST students and their parents, that kind of thing. But, yeah, so I did want to.
I, I should mention that, just in terms of timeline, when the city staff and district staff met this past Monday, there was certainly expressed interest on both sides that all of these agreements be approved prior to June 30. So we don't want to carry over either contract into July.
Yeah, well, I think we, if we want to start construction, I mean, first week of June, right? We need to fisher cut bait by then, seems to me. But you're saying the city's on board with that?
Yeah, there's, there's motivation, certainly by both staff at the staff level to facilitate the approval of their respective elected bodies prior to June 30.
Correct. One question, just because my, I couldn't tell if it was the documents that are uploaded, but on the CBA on page five, there's the two different zip code representations, the impact area, zip codes by city, and then the second one, it, I couldn't tell if that's cut off or their words cut off, but. Yeah, isn't the second one supposed to be East Bay Green Corridor zip codes? The first one is the impact zone.
That would make sense.
And it maybe got pushed over with the redlining because there's like a column there that's kind of on the side. Anyway, it just, just seemed like the formatting of that needs to be clarified. And then on, somewhere on page seven, I can't refine it, but it, there was a reference to district architect. And, and there may be elsewhere, I didn't do a search, but there may be other references to, to Roy Miller's position. And, and it should be broader, like district representative.
Or just the owner's rep?
Yeah.
Depends on the work.
District representative.
Yeah, depends on the work.
Going with, with what the term we had in the contract.
No, you're right. No, I think, member F, you make a good point regarding bringing the CBA, CBA back without the edits. To give us a cleaner look at how the community benefit agreement looks. Yeah, but these, these are not, these are not major.
Yeah, no, those were.
Yeah, but no, I, I agree. Bringing the CBA back without the edits.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Tabor? This is very helpful.
Yeah, only that, you know, there's a lot here. It's a 200-page document.
Just a few pages?
Yeah. If I have further questions, I'll just follow up with you directly.
Please do. Yeah, I'd appreciate that. That'd be great.
Oh, you need more than a couple of weeks. No, this is helpful. And thanks for pointing out the section D in terms of the phasing, because that's, I was really curious and, and glad that that's been our focus, but just curious how did that, how would that, what that would look like in the contract, so thank you for that. Any other questions for Mr. Traver? Any public comments of the three? All right, thank you very much. And so we'll now move on to the next item, which is item L4.
Yes, President, I see members of the board. The purpose of L4 is, again, similar to the previous item, the opportunity for the board to have a first reading and review of the proposed joint occupancy agreement with the City of Emeryville. And I think Mr. Traver is also up on that item or will take the lead on that item.
Sure.
Mr. Traver, I've been, I think I called you John. I've been, I had all these Js in my eyes, so you have to excuse me. Right, right, you're Jim, not John. Excuse me, I apologize.
Too many Johns floating around. That's true.
I have a, I have a name that begins with another letter besides J.
So this one, we've seen before. We've taken this, it's been through several iterations. I think we came and talked to it, talked to you about it in June of, of 13, maybe, and also in September. And my thinking on this one was to take you through what's changed since we last saw it and let you know, you know, what, what's changed, what's the thought process behind that. And then if you have any questions, of course, let me know at the end of that. So I think the first thing is on page six of the master joint occupancy agreement. You'll see that a couple of the conditions precedent there for the finding of completion that has been removed. The condition precedent for SBE approval has been removed because essentially both of those things happened. The condition precedent for the city to get the bond dollars, get possession of the bond dollars is still there. The last time we talked about that with the city, they wanted that there, but that was some time ago. I would prefer to have it out, but I don't think that it's something to rock the boat over. My thinking on this was to get, however you all feel about it, if you'd like it out, I can propose that. I don't think that it's doing anything productive in there now, at least as far as I understand, the city has the money, so.
Yes, so where is that exactly in the, on page?
Is that on?
Six, I thought you said.
Page six, 1.1, I believe.
Yeah, so.
Yes, 1.1.
So hasn't this, as you said, hasn't the city already received the $21,200,000?
I believe that they have. I know that they had, you know, we all know they had the finding of completion come through.
Right.
Whether or not they actually have the dollars in, in their possession right now, I believe that they do, but I'm not 100% sure about that. It would seem to me that if they do, we don't need this condition anymore. But the last time we talked about it, they wanted to keep that. That was some time ago. It's up to, up to you guys to give me direction about whether or not this is something you feel strongly about. Or this is just, you know, we'd like to take it out, but it's not that big of a deal.
I'll just say for me, if we're going to keep it in, I would like for it to read, "The city shall contribute from the successor agency bond proceeds in the amount of $21.2 million." Instead of, the city, the, the city shall have received from, because they've already received it. Let's just put, they will contribute. They will make a contribution from.
I can propose that.
If, if it's going to stay in.
Yeah. They may have concerns about that, but this is what I would say. If, if, if you have a level of discomfort with this, let me see if there's a way to, to make this either come out or read in a way that more accurately reflects what the current state of affairs really is.
I'm just curious, is this, I mean, this, this phrase essentially, or this section just essentially says, this is the source or this is where the funds are coming from, right? I mean, that's.
The way that this thing actually used to work was the J O A wasn't going to become alive until they got the money and a bunch of other things, until we got SBE approval, until they had the finding of completion. All, a bunch of things had to happen because while we were negotiating this, they hadn't happened. That's why the, the purpose of this was to basically hold up the J O A and its effective date until they got the money.
So I guess my concern would be to understand why they want it in there and if, if they, if they have the money, we understood they have the money, why, why do they want a provision that says, well, if we, if we don't get the money, then we're not going to go through, so what, it is kind of what's going on behind that.
I can ask. I honestly don't know. As I stand here, it may simply be that they did not want to re, go through and revise the agreements further.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a non-substantive reason, obviously. I don't care that much about it. If, 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 if it's a proxy for some other condition precedent, then we ought to know what that is.
Sure. So that was the first one.
Now, what about these dates under 1.2, January 15, 2004? I mean, all that, all that time has passed.
Yeah, so when I ask them about this, that's one of the things, I mean, this is all past.
History, history.
So the next one is actually in section 2.2 of the project lease. And this is the one where the city wanted to have the ability to terminate early at any time after the fifth year of the lease.
So where are you exactly? 2.2 of the project lease?
Yep, 2.2, page three of Attachment C.
2.2.
Okay. So basically, what this is saying is that the city shall have the right to terminate. This is all, 2.2 is something we've seen before. It's saying they have the ability to terminate after the fifth anniversary of the commencement date. Essentially, they have to give us 180 days of notice. The change was just clarification. It's actually in the last sentence there. I can find it. It says, "Further, if prior to exercising this option to terminate, the district has," or excuse me, "the city has remodeled and reconfigured the community multipurpose room as provided in section 9.2 of the Operations, Maintenance and Shared Use Agreement, then city as a condition of such termination shall be obligated, using its own funds," this is the clarification, "using its own funds, independent of the ECCL replacement reserve account, to return the space or some lesser included portion of the space as determined by the district to substantially the same configuration." So basically, if they repurpose the multi, if, if they change the configuration of the multipurpose room, this requires them to either give it back or do some lesser portion of giving it back as we request.
So what, what happens, that was one of my questions is, you know, if the city terminates, says, you know what, we don't want to be part of running the ECCL anymore, then it's just reverts entirely to the district and all the property and all the cost of running it are now ours?
Yes, you would own the buildings. You would have, you would own the cost of maintaining them as well.
And, you know, conversely, there's not much point to our terminating. Right, because we don't have a place to send our kids to school. But I, so I assume that's why there's not any kind of provision like that in there.
That's right.
Yeah. They, they, tell me again the reason for why it makes sense for us to lease the whole site to the city?
So we had extensive conversations with Roy Miller and then it was Pat O'Keefe and Deb Lindo about how do we do this? And there were different options available. You could piecemeal the site so that you leased certain pieces of it and the district retained other pieces of it. What the parties ultimately came up with, really, in, in the spirit of this agreement, was a desire to want to live on the site together harmoniously and in an integrated way. And the feeling was that by separating the site out into different portions like that piecemeal, that objective could be compromised. So by, when it says that the entire site is leased to the city, it is subject to the joint occupancy agreement. So basically, the way that I have thought about this is, this is as though you're leasing a bedroom to someone else, subject to a bunch of terms and conditions. And those terms and conditions in this case mean that you're going to have further agreements about who actually uses that room and when and how it gets funded. So that's, that's the thinking behind doing it that way. And also to have additional flexibility for leasing and subleasing to third-party partners, that was a significant motivation as well. Because the city holds the leasehold interest on the entire site, the district is not subject to the same strict lease, surplus property lease procedures that we would be constricted to in terms of contracting with third-party partners like the library or the healthcare centers.
So that's what I was kind of getting at, as I recall, because it's been a year or more since we had this conversation, but the, there were certain advantages to having the city be the leaseholder instead of us be the, because it could, it could have been done that way, right? I mean, we, we are building and own most of the property, but the sort of minority owners being the, the leaseholder. And the reason was because there were, there were some actual benefits to having the city as opposed to a school district be the, And the reason was because there were, there were some actual benefits to having the city as opposed to a school district be the, the leaseholder, because we're, we're working on these other non-kinda traditional, noneducational, um, aspects of the project. Largely third-party vendors, but.
Yes. Yeah, that was, that was probably, I don't know if I'd say it was the main motivation, but it was definitely a major motivation, uh, behind doing it that way, was to have the flexibility to, lease to those third-party partners without going out to a surp-, you know, surplus property bid when, when we wanted to uh, have a new partner in the healthcare space, which may not always be the healthcare space.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in forty years from now, uh, it could change in characters.
Okay.
And Jim, also, if, let's say this agreement does terminate, the city still has its quote-unquote existing lease with the district when it comes to the, the ball fields, the playing fields, and the gymnasium, that will, if they were to terminate this lease, we would, they would revert back to that old lease. Is that correct?
No, I think that the old lease gets subsumed within the new lease.
Okay, but, uh, you're right. But if they were to terminate the new lease, wouldn't they go back to the old lease? Because they've already actually paid funds, you know, out some years of the old lease.
Yes, so the, the answer is on page two. It's section one point one.
Okay.
Um, it says the prior city district lease and sublease are terminated as of the commencement date of this.
Okay.
So those things are gonna go away. And you're right, the funding considerations were taken into account.
Right.
Um, uh, the thinking between the partners was those dollars were for that lease, which is going to be satisfied by this, albeit for a shorter term, but with better buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and ultimately, the funds that were paid for the lease are directly going toward construction of those buildings and the site, so.
So if they were to terminate this new lease, they would have to come back to the district and try to create a new lease if they wanted to occupy the ball fields, the gymnasium, you know, as they had in the old one?
Yes.
If they were to terminate this one?
Yes, uh, y- if they were to terminate this lease, they would not have any further rights.
Okay.
Uh, to the property.
That's the bottom line.
But if they wanted to continue to use it, there would be other ways for them to do that on a smaller scale without terminating, so.
Okay, what, what next did you wanna point out to?
Yeah, let me get to the next one here. Uh, an attachment, an attachment E, the governance agreement, there were some cleanup changes, um, essentially under section two, um, this now reads to say that the governance committee is a subset of the city schools committee. It consists of all five sitting in the changes. It now says, elected or appointed members of the city council and the city of, uh, of the city of Emoryville, and all five sitting elected or appointed non-student members of the board for the school district. Uh, and then to skip down to the next sentence there, "Any and all actions and approvals by the governance committee must be resolved by a majority vote of each body represented on the governance committee. The affirmative vote of at least three of the five, and the change is elected or appointed members of the city council and three of the five elected or appointed non-student members of the district board." And the final change there, it says, uh, it inserts the sentence, "Each party shall endeavor to ensure a quorum is present at each of these meetings."
Yeah, so my question on that one was, um, what happens if there's not a quorum of one of the bodies, but a majority of those, you know, present? Or I guess, I guess three is a quorum, so. You got two, the two school board members agree or disagree. You got the city council going, taking approving in action. Say the school board members disagree or vice versa. I mean, does it?
The governing, the governance committee, for all intents and purposes, operates as though the school board and the city are separate for voting purposes. Though you all be sitting together considering the same action, uh, you need to have a quorum of both in order to take action as the governance committee. And the reason for that is the governance committee is really only making pretty big decisions, and they're making decisions in some cases that are gonna impact finances. So a lot of thought went into doing it this way because if you just made it, you know, six out of ten, one side could really get hurt, uh, without having its own, um, you know, members there.
Yep, so that's the answer. It's gotta be a quorum of both bodies independently. And, uh, um, and, and, and each needs a majority independently, okay? And the, yeah, and I guess the way that this is written is that the, the student members of either the school board or the city schools committee really don't have a vote in these, in these governance matters.
That's right.
You know, Jim, can we stay there, um, at that paragraph? Because the last sentence, it says, "The governance committee shall meet at least, um, once per month." And the city schools committee has just, um, kinda voted to meet quarterly. So would that affect that particular sentence right there, changing it from monthly to quarterly?
So the governance committee is just a subset. It's a subset of your city schools, and the thinking probably, you know, the thinking was that city schools, uh, governance committee would meet on the same night. Now, if, if city schools is meeting less frequently now, uh, we need to determine whether or not we still wanna keep the governance committee meeting once a month. The thinking amongst the parties, uh, when we started talking about this was, at least out of the gate, we wanna have folks more involved more often, and if you don't want that later down the road, you can always scale it back. But the thinking was if you go, you know, less frequently, it's a, it's gonna be more difficult to get folks to change to more frequently.
Well, I would ask if you could go back to city staff and, and, and get their comment on that.
Yeah.
Um, based on what the city school, you know, is me, how we are meeting now. Do we continue with the quarterly, or do we wanna, we want the governance committee to meet on a monthly basis?
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that. I had the same question, and, and I assumed that by virtue of its being in here, that the city staff and our staff were telling us, and I agree if they are, that out of the gate, we should be meeting every month.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and scale it back after that. Um, but it, i- i- you might wanna put language in there that says, "Don't, we'll meet monthly unless the, uh, the governance committee decides to meet quarterly." Just so we don't have to both bodies amend this by formal vote in a meeting if we do kinda go back and forth.
Yeah, I, I, I think it probably would be good to make a little more flexible by saying, "Shall meet monthly unless both bodies agree to, uh, meetings less frequently." I mean, rather than say monthly, it's either monthly or it's quarterly.
Yeah.
It's monthly, but could be less. Um, as I read this, it, it kinda remind, it, it sounds like it's basically the city schools committee coming back to meet monthly. And my only comment to that was, when the body was meeting monthly, and I don't know the recent histories with quarterly meetings, but the momentum and the communications were, um, were very positive. So I, I would agree with Mr. Traver that I think on the onset, I think you should try to strive to meet monthly unless it's not necessary. And even with city schools, if there wasn't enough on the agenda to meet, then both sides agreed, let's cancel the meeting, so.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I mean, council had felt that, you know, on their side, they were having too many meetings and they wanted to scale back on meetings, so that's how the city schools went from monthly to quarterly. So it was really driven by the city council.
Well, and, and, but I'll, I'll add too, I think a lot of it had to do with the substance of the meeting and making sure that it was, um, more driven to this project. And I don't, I think at the time where we were sitting, it wasn't a lot of meat, so, um, I think it was a little bit of both. But, um, I do like the idea of having that flexibility, 'cause I do think from the onset, we, we need to be as one as much as possible, um, because who knows, there may be, it's ten member, it may be a nine at some point. I mean, look at us, we're at four to five now. But I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense to ensure that we're all on the same page as partners for this project.
Okay, keep it moving?
Okay, uh, going on to, uh, it's section four point one, and actually four point two. It's the same change here substantively. Uh, this, these sections used to say, uh, that the programs committee consisted, the specific people, the city's community services director and the district's director of curriculum and instruction wellness director. Now, what this says is, because those titles may change, um, you may want different people sitting on those committees, we want flexibility. Um, now it says, "The programs committee shall consist of an equal number of persons from each party uh, to be determined by the city, uh, excuse me, by the superintendent and city manager in their separate capacities." So basically, um, your superintendent and your city manager are going to say, "We need two people or one people, uh, one person, excuse me." And, uh, they're gonna designate who that person is regardless of their title. So it's just a flexibility issue.
I like that.
Okay, the next one is actually going to be in section six point four of the O and M agreement, attachment F. So essentially, what's happening is, um, the parties are gonna develop this capital replacement maintenance schedule. The change here is about midway down. And it says, "Initial draft templates for the maintenance standards and capital replacement schedule are attached here too as exhibit F three and F four respectively incorporated herein." That's all old. The new part is, "The maintenance standards and capital replacement schedule as developed by the O and M committee shall be reviewed and updated and approved periodically by the administrative committee as necessary, but in any event, not less than once every five years." So basically, your administrative committee is gonna be looking at, which, which is your city manager and your superintendent, is gonna be looking at that O and M schedule, capital replacement schedule, and saying, "Is this right? What do we need? What's coming at us? And how do we budget this, uh, so that we have enough money to make repairs, but we don't run out of money, uh, to do other things that we need money for, so."
You know, I kinda thought, and I really don't see this, I didn't see it, that the O and M committee should also be developing the yearly budget since they're on the ground doing all the work. And I don't think I've seen that in the document.
Okay, so it's in, it's actually in attachment E. Uh, it's subset, it's four point two C. So basically, the O and M, uh, committee is preparing and submitting an annual report to the administrative committee, which is your superintendent and your city manager, uh, which says, "We recommend this allocation of O and M costs for this upcoming year based on our proportionate actual use." So we, your O and M committee is sort of monitoring what the party's actual use is so that parties, you know, are paying their fair share for O and M.
And you said that were, that was under four point?
Uh, it's, it's four point two C. It's on page five of attachment E for me.
Oh, okay, you, okay, I, you know what, you're right. I did see that, and I kinda inserted, when you say annual report, I inserted annual budget report.
So basically, um.
Yeah, I thought you needed to put budget in between annual and report, just to, just for clarification.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So putting my, um, uh, worst-case scenario ahead on again. Uh, what if the, the, the staff of the parties come up with the, the annual, uh, O and M budget to cover the maintenance and operation of the facility? It's apportioned as agreed to according this, uh, joint occupancy agreement, and it goes to one or the other board or the council, and that, they, they say, "You know what, uh, that's too expensive, we don't wanna do it."
It's a double-edged sword, right? Because that could be to your benefit, it could be to your detriment. Because, you know, your O and M schedule is gonna be a significant sum, and your capital replacement schedule is gonna be a significant sum. The way that this works is you each have control over your own budgets. Um, the O and M committee is gonna take a look at who's actually using the site, how much, and they're gonna talk to the admin committee and say, "Here's what we actually think." The admin committee is gonna talk to the governance committee and say, "This is what we think the allocations percentage-wise should look like next year." And then the trick, so, this is the trick, is the governance committee, which is really both boards, right? You're gonna do this together. You're gonna make a recommendation as the governance committee, to yourselves as the district board, and to the city as the city council as to what those O and M shares and capital replacement reserve deposits are gonna look like. So you're gonna know before it's time to sign off on that as individual parties, what the other party is feeling like doing.
So, so if there's a breakdown, it won't occur at the budget approval, it'll, it'll occur in the governance committee conversations.
Yeah, i- if you know, if, if there's gonna be a breakdown, you're gonna know about it then.
Right, and then, um, I guess we, we can't, we can't write a contract that's gonna prevent that from happening or, or necessarily resolve it if there is, other than, yeah, but play out the scenario, though. There's just a breakdown, governance committee can't agree on whether it's the allocation of seventy-seven, twenty-three, or, um, you know, who should be paying how much for what, what year, or, you know, the politics change somewhere and either our board or the council says, "Ooh, we don't, you know, they don't really support the project or the joint operation anymore." And, and, and there's just sort of, there's a, there's a stymieing that happens at that governance committee. Is there, what's the fallback to make sure that the facility keeps functioning, kids keep getting educated, and the wellness center, you know, keeps providing healthcare, et cetera?
You know, in all candor, I don't know if there is that type of a fallback. The way that this is set up to work is the two bodies get in the same room and basically, they have to come to something. And if they, you know, if they don't come to something in good faith, I'd say they're in breach of the agreement. But, you know, it's not, the, the agreement's not set up to work that way. It's set up to essentially put the parties in a position to come to, uh, where they have to come to an agreement to get the thing funded, which both have an interest in doing, um, because they're both liable for the costs. The costs are gonna continue to sit out there and accrue. It's really just a matter of who's paying how much for what.
Right, so I guess, uh, at the end of the day, some, someone, whether it's one of the parties or some outside vendor or student, or someone who's owed some money or owed some education, or someone is gonna pursue to say, "I don't care who, who pays for it, but you gotta provide me what I'm due," and, and, uh, you know, you, you're both liable here. And, and you can, you know, figure it out in the courts if you have to, but the, the, the show must go on.
Right, and you're gonna continue to accrue those costs. I think the claim, uh, at the outset of this agreement, the district is going to be administering those types of expenses and paying those types of expenses using the funds that we get. types of expenses, and paying those types of expenses, using the funds that we get from the city. Um, the way that that would, the way that that would work, if you just couldn't get a budget put together, um, the parties would be in breach of their obligations, I guess, under the governance agreement, uh, and would need to look at, you know, I guess if, if, if that's the case, and one party's incurring funds because the other is not able to come to an agreement, you know, the result is you go under the general conditions provisions of this thing, and you try to work it out at mediation, you try to work it out, um, prior to litigation, so...
Okay. Well, it's good to know what, uh, worst-case scenario is, that we will never reach.
Yeah. No, I like how you think. One never knows.
Never know, got it. So, yeah. Next, is there...
Yeah, um... So, it's section ten of the operations and maintenance agreement. This is a new. Essentially, as we roll through, you know, year thirty of this agreement or what have you, um, the district is going to be entering into contracts for the O and M of the facility that are going to be funded, at least in part, using city dollars. Um, the city wants the ability to, um, see those contracts, uh, and approve those contracts, uh, at least through the city manager and city attorney level. Um, that's up to twenty-five thousand. If it's over twenty-five thousand, they feel they are legally obligated because, uh, the way that the agreement is set up, to take it to the city council for approval. So, the way that this works, you got a contract for twenty-six thousand dollars, let's say it's for trash removal. Um, district says, "We need this contract." You would send it to the city. Uh, the city is not able to unreasonably withhold that approval, but they do get to review and approve the contract that their money is going to be spent on. Um, this is a protection for the city, basically, to avoid having the district enter into contracts that the city doesn't know about, that city money will be spent on. Um, they want to have some level of control as to where their O and M dollars are going, so...
So what about if the city's entering into a contract? Does the board get the same, um, pleasure in receiving those contract, that contract, and being able to review it, since if they enter into a contract on the facilities, our dollars are going to be spent towards, you know, that contractor, or contract as well?
It's a good point. Uh, the answer is no, but it's a good point, and the, the, I think the reason that the answer is no is because the way that the agreement is set up is for the part, the district to initially administer all of those contracts, like for the garbage hallway or whatever. Um, but it contemplates that possibly switching at some point in the future. If it did switch, obviously, we'd want the same courtesy of being able to approve the contracts that they, um, felt were necessary to operate the facility. Um, I think it's a good point. Uh, I'd like to make this a reciproc, a reciprocating provision, so that if it ever does switch, uh, we have the same ability that they want, so...
I think we need to make that, you know, this, um, have that discussion, and make that comment to city staff. Um, in this paragraph, though, I thought, I mean, my suggestion would be that we could just replace city manager, city attorney, and district superintendent and district council with the administrative committee. Is that, and then with the city council and, um, district board, replace that with the, um, governance committee? Would that be, would that be prudent?
The first part I'm okay with.
Okay.
Uh, the second part is more problematic.
Okay, all right, leave that here.
Okay, almost done. Um...
Uh, hold, hold on a second. So, the... I- is this provision in paragraph ten only when it's spending the city's money that it comes into play? And how do we know, I mean, will it be clear that this is a, involves city money versus, um, you know, solely our money, or?
So, uh, so, basically, the way this is set up is, um, it says, "The expenses which are proposed to be included as operations and maintenance or capital replacement expenses and paid proportionately by the parties as provided in section six above, shall be subject to review by, you know, all of those parties that are described thereafter." But if it's not getting paid, um, pursuant to section six of the O and M agreement, which is by both, um, then does need to go through the contract approval process. That being said, there are limitations on alterations that the party can make, uh, alterations that the parties can make to the facility on their own. I think it's a five-thousand-dollar, uh, limitation. Um, that's to avoid one party, um, doing damage, well, doing something to the site that the other party would find undesirable. Um, it's capped at five thousand.
If there's a twenty-five thousand dollar, the way this reads to me is if the contract's twenty-five thousand dollars, and the, the city shares two thousand dollars, they still get to review it. Is that right? I mean, if there's any, you know, mingling.
Yes, so...
Is that really what they want, is to be reviewing every little, you know, I could, twenty-five thousand sounds kind of low to me as it is, but, but when you consider that it might be as low as a dollar, uh, that seems, um, you know, burdensome for them and, and a bit extreme for us.
This is what they have asked us for.
Okay.
I think there is concern on their part, uh, that they comply with contract approval procedures that they have legally. Um, they're, even though they're giving the money to us, I think the feeling is on their end, uh, and the contract is with the district and the vendor, the feeling is on their end, they are still spending public dollars, and they need to be accountable to the public for that. Um, basically by making sure that, you know, the contract is what is agreeable to them. Under twenty-five thousand, it just goes to essentially the admin committee. Twenty-six thousand, it goes to the full city council. Um, and again, I think that's because they have a concern about the legality of them just giving us money to go and contract, uh, as we see fit.
Yeah, well, again, I mean, I, I don't know if it's just that they didn't think about it, or if that's really what they want, but i- if it's tw- below twenty-five thousand of their money, then that could go to the admin committee, is what I'm saying, as opposed to, you know, five thousand of their money, twenty thousand of our, or, you know, in the...
I can propose that.
Yeah.
I can, I can, I can offer that. Um, I see what you're saying. So basically, if the split is, uh...
They're twenty-something and twenty-five.
Yeah, because seventy-seven twenty-three, and, and it is a twenty-five thousand dollar contract.
And it's like a hundred thousand dollar flat contract, there, they would still be under twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, let me ask them about that, see what they say. That makes sense. Um, I don't know how they'll feel about it.
They still have their admin committee, you know, to...
Right, right, right.
Reject it if, if they don't like it. But it just seems, do they really want to see every little contract that might have a very small portion of their city funds in it?
Um, I just wanted to add, is there, and it may be here, um, but in terms of the time-sensitive, you know, nature, and I know we talked about it before in other contracts, or maybe even in, in respect to this one, but, um, you know, certainly, the districts have, well, we, we know, um, certain contracts, we need to have something done soon. We can't wait for a couple of months before they get on their docket, for instance. So is that, is that a consideration with this contract review in addition to, you know?
So for these, and this is all stuff that happens after the site's all built out and we've occupied it, um, what this says is they will not, uh, how's it worded? Shall timely consider and act upon such request. So, I think there's some good faith that we're leaning on there, if they really wanted to drag it out. Um, that doesn't have a lot of teeth to it, uh, in terms of a timeline, um, but it sort of is what it is, uh, in terms of, you know, giving them a timeline versus ac- asking them to do it as soon as they can. You could put something in that's more restrictive, as, that's like in the design and construction agreement, that says, you know, "Here's a timeline for you to act." Um, that's something I could ask them to do, uh, that's up to you.
Only, only reason I bring it up in this, this scenario, it doesn't necessarily apply. I mean, it's a different, but I, I just recall us having an emergency in terms of the boiler totally went out one year. That was just a few years ago, um, and having to have an emergency meeting to allocate, you know, uh, the, the, I mean, I guess to approve the, um, the expense, or to even go forward with replacing. So, I mean, just in scenarios like that, we can't have so much of a, you know, a burdensome process sometimes to respond and react, um, and it may not be, you know, that is an emergency, right? But, I mean, there may be something that we don't foresee now, um, that could happen, but we need to be sensitive about what the needs are of our district, um, in terms of ensuring that we have what we need on time. So if there's a way to, um, put some language in there that they have so many, you know, I wouldn't say like five days turnaround, but just something in, uh, two weeks or something like that, just to offer that as, um, as something to, you know, start the conversation anyway.
Okay.
And I think, you know, those would be for emergency items. You may want to phrase it that way.
It could be other, I mean, it could be other things that are emergency to who. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know what they are.
I guess, I guess, what I would suggest is, is ideally, there'd be something that
said, you know, "Within thirty days," or, uh, but i- in addition, if the board by a majority votes to designate an item an emergency item, that then that triggers a shorter timeline, whether that's...
Sure.
Ten days or something.
That makes a lot of sense to me, yeah. Okay. Okay, the next, uh, change is in the design and construction agreement. It is essentially the change to, uh, the contract review process in section four. Essentially, what this does is, uh, for contracts that are over eighty-five thousand, um, they're going to go to the city council. The city council can only disapprove one of those contracts if they make a finding, um, that the services do not, uh, encompass ECL eligible, eligible project costs as defined, um, or that the scope of work is unnecessary for completion of construction. So this is all tying, tying the city's hands essentially to, um, keeping construction moving. And the third criterion is that the fees charged are in excess of commercially reasonable, reasonable rates. Essentially, what this, um, would do is, I think, the city would be acting, um, and approving contracts for things related to construction. Uh, and this is, I'm just saying this in plain English now. Um, the city's going to review and approve construction-related contracts. Things that are not construction-related, I think are, um, at risk of not being approved by the city. And I think part of the reasoning behind that is, the city has a concern, uh, that we ensure the project is funded from beginning to end, and they don't want us to have a shortfall. Um, they want to maintain some level of control over that process to ensure we don't have that shortfall. So to the extent that contracts are not construction-related, there is a possibility they will be rejected by the city council. There is nothing that prevents us from entering into those contracts using non-district bond fund dollars, uh, if we wanted to do that. Um, but that's sort of the brass tacks of the way that this reads right now.
Non-city bond fund dollars, or?
I'm sorry, say it again.
There's nothing to prevent our using our own district bond fund dollars to, to, to pay for the company. Trying to understand the last point.
Sorry, uh, there's nothing there to pre- prevent us from using non-bond funds. Uh, so if you had a different fund source outside of the bond funds, such as you just wanted to use general fund dollars to have a consultant contract for communications or something like that, this doesn't prohibit you from doing that. This applies to and restricts contracts that are going to expend district bond funds and city bond funds.
So even though we, we're, we're talking about the city restricting the district's use of its own district bond funds?
Correct, yeah, to me, and the thinking is to, yeah, yeah, maintain the integrity of the budget, yeah.
But what I'm hearing you say, Jim, it doesn't pre- preclude us from, um, entering into the contract, you know, anyway?
You can enter into the contract.
I mean, it may, it may disrupt the partnership a little bit, but...
Well, you could enter into the contract, but you cannot contractually fund it with your bond funds without the city's approval. So, uh, after you sign off on the J O A, and you have a non-construction-related agreement, it has to go to the city for their approval. If you wanted to use a different source of funding, that doesn't need to go to the city.
So, my, my sense, Jim, is that the interpretation of that is that, um, given the ninety million dollar cost of the project, it's going to take the district's bond funds and the city's funds to build, or at least sixty million of that roughly will be for construction purposes. But what would preclude the board from authorizing the use of other bond funds to address any items that come up under this section? So let, let me say it differently.
Yeah.
I mean, the dis, you know, in terms, because this is addressing construction. And so the district is committing so many bond fund dollars as their share of the construction costs, and the city's contributing their share. But the district would have additional bond funds available to it, um, I assume, and can't the, just, can't the board have the authority to expand those bond funds beyond what it's going to take together with the city to actually construct the project?
Not the way that this is set up right now. Um, the way that it is set up is the only thing that we can, when we sign the J O A, and through the J O A get access to the city's bond dollars, um, a couple of things happen. One is, the only thing that we're going to be funding with our bond dollars and the city's bond dollars are those eligible ECL project expenses, which are basically all construction-related. And the other thing that happens is, once we sign the J O A, any subsequent contracts that we need to enter into, which it basically is going to be the Turner contract, there's not going to be a lot of contracts after that. Um, any subsequent contracts have to go through the city in order for us to be able to spend our own bond dollars on them.
So, uh, measure J allows, or, in terms of authorization, I don't know if I'm going to say this right, but I know technology was a component that would, I mean, of course, that doesn't say construction, right? But, I mean, if the, if we had a need to bring computers into our classrooms, just as an example, that would be a, an expense that, or a contract that we'd have to go to council and, and have approved if it's over eighty-five thousand dollars.
That's right.
So we're frozen from a measure J, you know, um, standpoint, in terms of the terms, right, from measure J.
Well, what I did hear, um, well, I put it, what is in the budget is furniture, fixtures, and, and equipment, and that would include items like, um, computers, um, in furniture and things of that nature. So, to the extent that we could not purchase, I, I want to say, to the extent that we could not purchase those types of items, um, with our bond funds, I, I, I would disagree that we couldn't, because it's actually, it's already in the budget, and, um, we have to purchase furniture, fixtures, and equipment to, um, to kind of go into the facility.
But, but in reading this section, it seems to exclude...
Yeah.
Non-construction...
Right.
Things. And wouldn't F and, F, F, and E fall outside of... And wouldn't F and, F F and E fall outside of what is defined as construction costs? I mean, I know there could be gray zone things in terms of like networking and stuff that is attached to the walls and, you know, that kind of thing. But wouldn't typically F F and E not be considered part of construction costs?
Typically, yes. My understanding is that in this case, the plans for the project actually include the F F E, F F and E as part of what's going through this, the construction documents process. I could be wrong about that, but that's my understanding of how that works.
But is that part of the Turner construction contract? Those, those are, or we have our own, we have a separate. That is one of the contracts that Swinburne's overseeing is the F F and E. I don't, is that through Turner or is that through an independent party?
Believe it's through Turner. That's a good question, but I didn't see it in the contract. But I think that's the question to be asked. But I don't think Turner will be ordering the F F and E. I think that'll be coming from our owner's rep and he left.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, that, that would be a.
Let me check on that.
Yeah, but the contractor doesn't, the contractor doesn't purchase F F and E. They just build a building, the district actually, other individuals who purchased the F F and E or, or in our case, the owner's rep.
The limitation in this provision is architect, consultant and contractor agreements, which involve expenditure district bond funds. So I, I don't, I don't know, is the F F and E person, vendor or, you know, person who does the move and is that a, is that a contractor agreement?
That is a contractor.
That would be a contractor agreement?
Yeah, because you, you would go out to a vendor who sells the F F and E. You would, you know, do pricing, different vendors, and then you would pick a vendor that were contracted. So it would be a contractual item.
The, the, the timing of this, the applicability of this provision is just during construction, is that right?
That's right.
And how, how do we know that?
This, let's see.
And you're right, because in some areas, talking about expenditures, it doesn't, it excludes construction. But, you know, I want to say this goes back to the spirit of the council, as, as Mr. Traver says, wanting to be assured that the district has enough money to pay for, for the project. My concern or when I'm here thinking about this, you know, how do we ensure the city that the funds we have will be enough for construction? You know, along, in addition to what their funding sources will be contribute to. And then kind of set, I mean, you know, setting that dollar amount to them and say, okay, this is what we have, boom, this is it. This is all going towards construction. Anything outside of that, that we still may have bond, you know, bond dollars, we're using this for other areas of the project. I mean, I'm thinking out loud, I don't know if that's something that we could really be able to present, but, you know.
And that is the area that I, direction I was thinking of going in as well, if, you know, and I think it's sort of suggested by Dr. Sugiyama's comments too, that if, if it's sixty million dollars, that it's our share to get this thing built and we're gonna know that pretty soon based on a G M P, right? That that's what the guarantee should be, is that the first sixty million, they get to restrict. But after that, I, I, you know, legally, legally, I don't see how we can abdicate our fiduciary duty over the Measure J bonds because we are the body and entity that has jurisdiction over that. They have no interest in anything beyond the sixty million.
Right.
And it, it doesn't even seem to me legal to try to restrict our, our authority over the, the use of those bonds based on what, what the.
Right.
You know, the best educational use of those, of those funds are. We're sort of like, you're, you're giving an entity outside the public school system the authority to decide how these public agencies, but now the sixty million, I, I can understand, they have a legitimate interest in making sure that the project gets built. And Jim, I, I don't know, you probably tried something like that with them already.
We have tried that. Basically, what we said at one point.
One second, I want to hear member Ash.
I was just gonna say that their, their argument would then be that there's no, there's no like bottom line guarantee that that sixty million is what it is, even though we'll have that soon enough because.
The G M P.
Things could happen though, but there are.
That's the surety bond.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think it's gonna be a hard sell, it's on.
I mean, for, for me, I mean personally, this is where the two governing bodies need to be in a room talking about some of this. Because, you know, and staff and lawyers have done a marvelous job trying to carve this out and, and have done a good job. But I think there's, you know, some aspects of this contract that the two governing bodies really need to be having a meeting of the minds. Because, you know, staff and lawyers just, you know, you guys just cannot predict or know what, you know, both councils and, and school board is really thinking and what they really somewhat want. And I mean, there's always the, you know, those fine details, whereas, you know, the bodies have to, you know, like I said, come to a meeting of a, of the minds and really, you know, hash some of these things out. So, I mean, that's, that's just my, you know, two cents.
I mean, I suppose the other way to interpret the section is that, because understandably, the city's interest is to make sure there's sufficient dollars between their part and the district's part to actually construct the center. And since this language is really intended to allow them to weigh in on anything above eighty-five thousand that is defined really in the context of construction.
Right.
If the district were to be able to demonstrate that the dollars the district has available, together with the city's money, is sufficient to do the construction, but then the board wanted to spend a hundred thousand dollars out of bond funds to buy brand-new computers, but it doesn't impact the ability to complete the project, the construction of the project, I would think that the board would want the ability to make that decision. But then if I were the city, I would want assurances that if the board spent that hundred thousand, it's not going to jeopardize, you know, the construction of the project, so I'm.
So that's the question. And, and I guess where I, where I'm at now, how do we provide that information to the city to let them know that the dollars we have, that they are committed to construction and, and construction only? And any other funds, sources that we may have of, of bond funds that, you know, we could spend as the district chooses to?
Well, you should know in not too many days when we get a number from Turner.
Right, we should be able to do that.
Swinburne has a chance to review it with them.
Okay.
Do, do we know the factual answer? I mean, we're having a very interesting conceptual discussion, but it's partly why I asked the, the timing. I mean, right now, we're pretty close to the margin, aren't we, in terms of what bond funds we have available? We got it covered, but we don't have a lot of extra.
No, we don't know.
For computers or other things that are about, maybe out of a parcel tag, you know, but.
Or some of the funds we used earlier.
Right, but, so it seems like, is this even a problem if, if in fact, we need to use all of our available money to, to finish the project? And by the time we get done spending that in two years, you know, this thing is gonna be moot. I mean, we'll, we'll be beyond it. Is, is that a possibility?
It's certainly a possibility. I'm probably not the right guy to an- answer that question just because I, I don't have intimate knowledge of the budgets.
Right.
But I can tell you that from what I understand, in, in talking with Roy, you know, this was something that was important to him because he wanted us to have dollars set aside to do things besides construction, basically for communications, not, not really communications, but more community engagement and consultant work about how to maximize the use and benefit of the site. That was important to him, but, you know, going forward, I think there's a question about whether or not that is a fiscal possibility at this point, and I don't know the answer.
All right, so we can find out that factual answer, and I guess it's Mr. Bonet is gonna be the one to tell us how much, if any, room we have, Dr. Sugiyama, in our, you know, remaining bond funds to actually do anything beyond just build this project within the next two years.
Yeah, I thi- I think your analysis is probably a good one, and that is, I mean, both the city and the district have the mutual interest to make sure the construction is completed.
Right.
If it just perchance happens after the project is closed out, that there's extra bond funds available, I would assume that the use of those funds wouldn't fall under this agreement, once the construction is completed.
Yeah, once the construction's completed, if there's money left over, it'll go back to the parties based on the same percentage that they put it in.
Well, we, okay, but if, if we haven't spent our bond funds on the contract, then we haven't, we haven't put it in yet, we're just, it's in the bank, then this provision no longer applies to restrict the use of bond funds.
That's right.
So another question, the, the guaranteed maximum price, i- isn't that gonna tell us what we need to, to, to build the project? Is there any other costs that might come down that the city's worried about, that we don't know about, that's not gonna be covered by a surety bond or?
Could be unforeseen site conditions, adjustments to the G M P for things like that. But the G M P is gonna get you pretty close to knowing where you're gonna come out. I think part of the city's reluctance in this whole process has been the fact that we didn't have a G M P. They don't know.
Right.
So.
But we, we will have that pretty soon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that may change the conversation. But, you know, I mean, it just seems that we, we could commit, that we'll, we'll cover the G M P.
Can I say also, when we all last, so I'll just throw this out, you guys tell me what, whatever it is you think. When we all last met and talked, one of the ideas that was thrown out was, can we carve off some piece of our own bond funds and set that aside so that we can do what we want with it without city approval? And we, Roy and I sat down with city staff and we came up with language that did that. We didn't come up with a number. Roy proposed a million, but the number never was crystallized and then we went back to this. The only reason I bring that up is that would give you the, some flexi-, some degree of flexibility, but maybe that's not getting you all the way there where you want to be.
So, well, I mean, I, I would just add that I think, you know, not only tech, you, you brought up a wonderful point in terms of engagement or community engagement. We have a number of components that we can't necessarily freeze if we are covered, right, through the G M P process. So the language feels like it just hamstrings us somewhat. But I think with the reveal of what the number is, that will help me feel a lot more comfortable about, you know, even that approach. I like that, I mean, I personally like that approach in terms of carving dollars out and keeping that in, for instance. But I think that's where some of my angst is about freezing us. And we have a lot of commitments we've made to the community about what we would be doing with Measure J. But if we are at the margin, you know, it makes sense. But if we're not, we need to make sure we're supported in what we need to do for what we said we'd do.
So let me just throw this out, propose this. What if we, for right now, table this until we have a G M P number? And then as soon as we get a G M P number, I can go to city staff and say, this is what it looks like. What are you all comfortable with doing? And go from there. If there is, you know, a willingness to move, we'll know that with a lot more certainty once we have a G M P number. Right now, I feel like we are making decisions based upon partial information, we just don't know.
But I do want to say, I think, you know, and I, I know my colleagues agree with me. I mean, the, the main priority is getting the building built. And I think we need to do that and I think we need to be able to show, you know, the agency, the city council, that first of all, we have the money to build this, this project. I think that's first and foremost. And once we can, once we can provide that information, then I think these other things may fall in line. But I think, you know, that's the first thing we need to do and that.
Information.
We won't, we won't, we won't have the G M P until another week or so. And I think once we get that, we can really determine what our dollars look like of any residual amounts that may, you know, possibly exist. So I think we need, you know, I, I like your recommendation, you know, let's see what the G M P brings, let's see where our dollars are, and then we can come back to the section of the agreement.
The only thing I'd add, I agree with all that, and it, it is a legitimate interest of the city to. It's an interest we share with them, but it is an interest I recognize that they, that they want to make sure that this gets built, that we use our money to do that. It's just that, you know, I think we, we ought to be able to reach it in a way that doesn't constrict all of our uses of all of our bond funds beyond that which is needed to serve their interest and our interest. And, and along those lines, and this is another factual question I don't know the answer to, but we were, you know, running up against our bond kind of ceiling. Capacity, what was that, a year and a half ago, when we issued Series D. That may well have changed by now. The economy's improved, assessed values have gone up. So we may actually have some more capacity that we could tap to, you know, for other purposes, served by Measure J within the next two years. So, so I, there, there's just no reason that we should commit to, to unnecessarily cabin our constitutional duty to, to, to use those funds appropriately for educational purposes.
That's it, that's all I have.
I see, that's it.
That's it, Jim.
That's it?
What?
That's it, if there's any questions about anything else, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise that's all I have.
So I had a question.
I just have a thought.
I'm glad you had a thought, I've gotta find it.
And the thought is this, and it's something that President Dice brought up when we were just talking informally. So, you know, the genesis of this project really kind of came through a discussion between the city manager and the school superintendent and I think the city's parks and recreation. I mean, this was a vision that was born out of a, kind of a conversation between the city and the school district. And at least in the period, and so that conversation went on for what, that started like three or four years before I came. But at that point, as we were moving kind of closer to defining the vision, there was a conceptual plan drawn. One of the hallmarks of this project, and which is one of the reasons why Assembly Bill 1080 was sponsored by Nancy Skinner and was passed, one of the hallmarks of this project in all the places that we had gone to do presentations, went to U C Berkeley, we've gone to their conferences to present the whole ECL concept, and the hallmark was the incredible working relationship between the city and the school district, the collaborative working relationship, not just from a point of view of the issues that were addressed, but it was, it was the value that school board members and city council members placed on the ability to work together, work well together. Now, I realize that this agreement, the intent of this agreement is to really kind of get to the specific kinds of things that it, it addresses. But the one thing, and it doesn't have necessarily any legal standing, so it's not for that purpose, but there's nothing in this agreement that reaffirms that spirit of working together. And so we were kind of playing around with this idea that it would be nice to have a preamble to this agreement that says something to the effect that in the execution of this agreement, that the city of Emeryville and the Emery Unified School District reaffirm its longstanding commitment to working as partners for the benefit of the children in the district and the community at large. Just as a reminder, you know, that this whole thing was kind of born from that degree of kind of collaboration and working together.
Exactly. Exactly.
This is a legal document, and so I know, I mean, that, it's not the kind of language that probably is enforceable legally, but I think it's an important reminder for future school board members and future city council members about how this project all came to be at the very beginning, and whether it's in the form of a preamble or something, I think it's an important statement to make.
I agree.
You know what that added? That added the love.
I would say the heart was in there, the heart was in there.
So, Jim, let me ask this question, you know, based on this agreement, what authorization does the school district have? What authorization does the city have? And what are the shared authorizations of this agreement? Is that too tough?
Well, I think that there's, because the agreement covers all aspects of your relationship, there's a lot of different ways, there's a lot of different answers to that. I mean, financially, we have authorization essentially to spend our own money, as well as city money, with their approval to cover the costs of operations and maintenance on the site, as well as future costs of, you know, capital replacement. So, basically, we are authorized to spend each other's money to, you know, make the site run the way that we would like to see it run. We're authorized to, both of us, both parties are authorized to come to agreements about the way in which space is shared on the facility, with minor exceptions for the exclusive parts of it, which are just, like, for the district offices and city administrative offices, where you don't really want to have flexibility. Everything else is open for discussion and open for sharing and use, but subject to the agreement of the parties, and really, it'll boil down to your administrative committee, your district superintendent and city manager. And what'll happen is that's going to evolve over time, you know, they're going to have different visions for the way that the site gets used 10 years from now, as opposed to the way this thing opens. As far as, you know, finances for right now, our authorization is to, with the city's approval, spend $21.2 million of theirs to complete construction of the project, so long as we do that on things that are related to construction. They don't have an authorization to spend our money, but they do have, you know, an authorization to restrict the way in which we spend theirs, and to a certain extent, the way that we spend ours. And again, we talked about the reasoning behind that, so, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Well, I do like the, you know, what Dr. Sugiyama added in terms of having some, some spirit document, some love document, I think is really appropriate, so that we can all be reminded every time we look at this document.
And that just has to be true.
Exactly, it needs to live beyond us, so, and that's the whole point.
Well, and it goes in the recitals, paragraph R, pages three and four, there's the vision statement.
Just needs some more love.
Yeah, well, it does, it has community engagement and wellness and a lot of the vision in there, but it doesn't have the city-school partnership visions piece, so I think, I think that's where we go.
It's the spirit piece with which this whole agreement and the vision of the center has been achieved, and, I mean, I know the guiding principles, I was here when we worked on the guiding principles, and those are very nice, and I think important, certainly an integral part of the bond measure language, but, but the piece that isn't addressed by guiding principles or any other recitals has to do with the reaffirmation of the value that both the district and the city place on working together for the benefit of the entire community, the children we serve, and for the community members in Emeryville. And I think, you know, I mean, I know it sounds kind of philosophical, but, but I do believe strongly, at least when I came here, that was what I was most impressed with as I was getting up to speed on this project, is, because everywhere we went, people said, you mean, the school district and the city work together that way? And we've had, we just had so many people say, that just doesn't happen in many places. So, and I'd be willing to kind of work with Jim and try to, you know, create a draft of something, and I could send it out in a Friday memo or to the board, or sometime next week, early next week, just to solicit board members' comments, but.
That's great.
I think that sounds great, love to see it.
So, one minor technical question, because I, I just saw the address was the San Pablo address, does it matter that we're 4727 San Pablo Avenue, it's all throughout the document, even though we're technically here right now?
I don't, well, for some of them, it should be the new site, but for the design, construction, and finance, it should be the old site, you're right, so let me fix that, as long as we're going to be living here, which is during the course of those three documents, it should be this address.
Okay, thanks.
So, two more questions, or, well, maybe three. Tell me again the basis for the 77%, 23% split?
Yeah.
And is it, that's a sort of current estimate, or is that a, that can change in five years or something, that's not fixed for all time?
So, you're talking about the capital replacement reserve shares? The, those shares were initially set at, I think it was 7327, and they since bumped at the request of the city. The reason that they were set that way, and that they're more static, they are based upon the parties' respective bond contributions. The thinking is, basically, you know, we've paid for 77% of the site, they've paid for 23% of the site, and so, in terms of maintaining it in the future, that's how cost should be split. That is not set in stone forever, it can be revisited, I want to say after five years, but I would tell you that changing that number is not going to be easy, but, you know, that's a number that was negotiated between the district and the city, the district superintendent wanted to move it up on our end, and that's how we came to that number.
Okay. See, the, yeah, well, I lost, I lost my follow-up thought on that, but the, yeah, maybe it was around the matrix of use, and sort of the annual, kind of like, it seemed like there was some conversation earlier about maybe not going that route, in terms of the annual kind of cost, based on some annual negotiated matrix, but it seems like you kind of ended up back there.
Yeah, the, the O and M, annual O and M is going to be based upon actual use as determined by the matrix, you know, the use matrix. We talked about, and I think what we got away from was the reconciliation idea. As I recall, the concern was, we didn't really want to live in the past with that as much as we wanted to get it right going forward, so.
So, it is what it is for the, every year, and then it's kind of revisited annually?
Yeah, so, and I, forgive me, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, I want to say it's by April 1, you'll get your, you'll know what your shared use matrix looks like, and your O and M percentages will go through the O and M committee to the admin committee, or the government, governance committee. So, you'll have those percentages along, that'll be based upon what your future use under the new matrix looks like for the coming year.
Okay. And that, lastly, why the city is tasked here with overseeing third-party vendors' contracts? Why is that the case, and, you know, I mean, it has to be one of us, so.
Yeah.
And end up that it's a city, and do we care, and?
I think that it ended up that way simply because the, we had a choice as to whether, one of them is accounting and budgeting, and the other was administration of those contracts, and for no particular reason, I think, we took accounting and budgeting first, and they took administration of those contracts second. The thinking being we could switch later on if we wanted to do that.
But that, does that, I guess, in terms of do we care, it, it seems that, I mean, the main ones that are in my mind are wellness and the library, and those seem to be, you know, a majority of the time dealing with our students, and a minority of the time, maybe after hours, the students' families, or after hours, the library, but, I mean, it's sort of the primary purpose of both of those is serving the school community, so do we care that the city's, am I wrong about that, or, and do we care that the city, and this is also kind of a question for my fellow board members, that the city is kind of overseeing these contracts we have that are maybe 60% dealing with our students and our school population?
See, I was thinking it was something else.
I don't, I don't see the use for the city to be approving or looking at contracts that deal, let's say, with special ed, or anything that's instructional to the school district. I see, you know, if there is any type of oversight or review of contracts outside of the construction, it would really be, you know, services, contract services that have to be performed on the particular facility itself. But anything dealing with instruction, curriculum and instruction, and dealing with students, I see no need for the city council to even have to weigh in on those type of contracts.
And I don't think that this agreement requires them to do that.
Right.
A couple of things, John, the, so the third-party uses for the long-term partners that we're going to have, like the health, the health center, those are mutually, the party selected has to be mutually selected by the parties. As far as administration of third-party use, I think what the contract is more talking about is.
Short-term.
Yeah.
Someone comes in for a weekend.
Exactly.
Festival or something.
Yes, and the reason, okay, so, now that I further understand what you're getting at, the reason that the city, I think, was wanting to do that is that jives better with their programming, exactly.
City services.
City services.
Right, that makes sense. Yeah, okay, so the, yeah, as I said, the library and the wellness center, those are jointly agreed to and negotiated?
Yes. Yeah, so whenever you have a, and it's under, it's sections 5.1 and 2, whenever you have a long-term occupant, those have to be occupants that are mutually agreeable to the parties, and it's on terms and contracts that are mutually agreeable to the parties.
Okay. Well, just to kind of return to the spirit point of Dr. Sugiyama, you know, this is really the nuts and bolts of the spirit, right, in making these, this cooperation, collaboration between the city and the district work in a really complicated way, but, but, you know, you've done an impressive amount of work here, you and the city staff, and, yeah, it's just to say, let's, you know, bring this home, and, you know, you should be presenting at conferences and, you know, events around the country, talking about this kind of collaboration, because it is not that common, and it is, you know, you probably learned some things along the way here that no one has ever learned or thought about how to kind of structure this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you ought to, you ought to share that.
I'd be glad to. I plan to do that.
Good, good.
Same, I had, I had, no, I just thought about, back to the phases that the project will likely take, in terms of the high school being maybe the first building that will be online and used, and I guess the other facilities too, the pool and the gym. So, in terms of the O and M, I'm just curious, is that, it probably is not in here yet, I'm just assuming that, but in terms of any maintenance that comes up from the use of buildings that are early, you know, released early, I mean, is that going to be covered, or does it need to be addressed here yet? Because there will be costs, I mean, probably what, six months before that April 1, if that's the time period.
Yeah, I think before we occupy, the way that this work as a practical matter is, you're going to have your first shared use matrix, and it's going to be partial for a while, and that's going to drive your O and M costs, and most likely, you know, the big part of the, the big part of the construction right then is going to be you, so.
Yeah, that's helpful, I was surprised I was able to get that out at 11 o'clock at night, so thank you, thank you for entertaining that question.
You know, I have quite a few revisions going through here, and, I mean, they're small.
Can you email them?
And that was going to be my comment, Jim, can we kind of get together or email you some of these iterations? But I do want to put this out there. The, my main concern with this, with this agreement, it boils down to the O and M reserve, as well as the capital reserve. And from the district standpoint, having to allocate dollars to a reserve on a yearly basis is just not conducive to a school district. I mean, we do have to put away reserves for economic uncertainties, but outside of that, you know, school districts are not in the business of putting away reserves for a lot of capital improvements and O and M. Now, when I look at, you know, both of the reserves, I'm a little bit more comfortable with the O and M budget, because I can kind of look at that as a deferred maintenance reserve, and I think we can, we can somehow come up with a percentage, you know, to put in to that reserve as we do deferred maintenance. But a capital improvement, you know, and the dollars that have to go in there, I think the board really needs to take a close look at that and determine how we fund that. And we need to really talk about how we fund the O and M as well, but the, you know, but that capital reserve is really big, and I think we need to come up, well, we need to find ways or have staff come to us and let us know how we can feasibly do this before we really sign off on the agreement. Now, it does state in the agreement for the capital reserves that, you know, I believe the administrative committee could, they can, you know, not allow the, both agencies to, you know, put in money, you know, at any particular certain year or time, but in that spirit, which is great, I think we still need to, as a district, figure out, you know, how we fund such a reserve. So, I just kind of wanted to put that out to the board members going forward, as far as looking at those two reserves and how we fund it, and really have staff come back to us and let us know how we can feasibly do the other facilities for the students and families, right? So, I mean, it's, I really think it's a point of conversation that, you know, we need to have with staff, and staff needs to come back, again, and inform us how we can really fund both of those reserves with the dollars that we're receiving on a recurring basis.
Good point.
President Dice, so, subsequently, obviously, as the board members look at this document, there may be other questions, and it would be certainly appropriate for board members to forward those questions to me, and then I could forward them to Mr. Trayber, and we could respond to those questions, kind of in between now and the second reading of the JRE.
That would be great, that would be great.
Anything you want to say about the sublease document?
We've already. We've already, we've already signed off on that, that's in place and allowing us to do the work that we're doing on the site right now, so. Nothing has changed on that.
Have they signed off on it?
Yes.
Because the, the version we have is only our signature.
Yeah, I noticed that. I do have their signatures, they've approved it and signed off.
All right, any public comments to that, right? Thank you for standing there for so long, I really appreciate all the hard work, and look forward to seeing you back here in a couple weeks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
We'll move on to item L5, Approval of Board Policy 460 and Administrative Reg 460 regarding the LCAP. This is a second reading, and appreciate what I saw in here from staff.
Yes, I wasn't here for the first reading, so I will, I will send this item back to President Dice.
See, we got our eye, I see, I see. So, so I do know that board reviewed in the last meeting and requested some amendments, and I did see those in red, added, and wanted to basically ask board members, are we sufficiently satisfied with what we see in terms of what was added to both documents?
I am, good to go.
That's a 1049 comment, all right. Any other comments, questions? In red, it looks great. Any public comments on this? Awesome. Or any, can I get a motion to approve the two documents this evening? I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any objections? All right, so we now have two fully accepted, Board Policy 460 and AR 460 regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan. Thank you, staff, for providing that and getting that to us so quickly. We now have the opportunity M, Board Reports and Announcements.
I don't have any reports or anything, but I did not mention something in the presentation of Measure AA. As the speaker had said, that Measure A exists now, and I believe Measure AA is trying to kind of re-up on that, but I did not say that the district is a recipient of Measure A funds at this particular time. Yeah, you know, we've been, and we've been getting Measure A funding for the wellness for, I mean, at least about four or five years. So I think it would be...
Do you know how much that is?
I want to say it's about, I want to say about $63,000, I believe, somewhere around there, yeah. So I just wanted to, you know, make that statement, you know, as far as, as far as the board in supporting something that has been a beneficiary to, to the district, so I just wanted to say that.
Great reminder. I have my ballot, do you, if you do, vote? I am an absentee ballot holder, because I used to travel a lot, so, but, yeah, make sure you vote. I have no Board Report or Announcement any here. Actually, I do have an announcement, I will not be at the May 28 meeting, I, I do apologize. I will be on a vacation, I, I need it, and so, but I do remember Vice President. Good job, good job, getting you ready, getting you ready, thank you so much for handling that. And so with that, it looks like calendar review, want me to run through it?
I guess, I guess my announcement along those lines is that I, I won't be here for the June, is it 11th? June 11th meeting. I'll be in the East Coast on business.
You get to travel too.
I do.
You travel a lot. All right, calendar review?
Yes, the only thing I want to discuss with the board is a need for us to have a special board meeting. It'll be very brief, probably 30 minutes or less. The item to discuss is kind of a status update on the soils mitigation process and costs associated with that. So, we are looking at next week sometime, and I, I just wanted to, see, we actually, this would be an action item, so we would need at least three board members there, because with four members on the board, two, a vote of two does not carry a motion. So, there is a finance committee that is, is tentatively scheduled for May 21st at 7:30 in the morning. Mr. Dwin is on that committee, and Mr. Simon, who was on the committee, is no longer here. I guess the question is whether or not there are two other board members that can make 7:30 that day, or is the board's pleasure to meet like at 5:30 in the evening?
I can do 7:30. 21st.
Okay, and we promise to get, we, we promise to get you out of there in 30 minutes.
With that, and drive to San Ramon, I'm happy, all right.
Great, thank you.
That was easy.
Mr. Bonet, will that work? If we meet, when, that's Wednesday, right, Wednesday, the 21st, okay, great.
All right, great, and so we do have our next regular board meeting is May 28th here at Ralph Holly's site. Superintendent's Committee that evening at 5, prior to the meeting start, and again, I won't be there. And then we have that finance committee that was just mentioned, that'll morph into a special meeting. Facilities Committee meeting, June 4. Then we have a Communications Committee meeting, study session, let's go back, study session, LCAP, 5 o'clock. And is that what day, someday soon? I don't know what that is, sorry. Look on the calendar for the correct dates. 28th, May 28th is a special study session regarding LCAP at 5?
Yeah, so it will take the place of the Communications Committee meeting that day.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It will take the place?
Yes.
Okay.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
But we need all the board there, it's a study session.
I won't be there, but I'll be there in spirit, there's my spirit right there. All right, at this time, the board will adjourn to closed session and report out at the next open session. Meeting adjourned.